Call to the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I ask everybody to remain standing for a moment of silence for in memory of Court Steinheiser, who tragically passed away unexpectedly last week. He reached a lot of students in Ellenville, was a Wudak Kwan instructor, and he was also a former Ellenville High School graduate. Thank you. Call for the acceptance of the minutes of the September 17, 2024 meeting. Been moved. Second in discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Public forum for the decision. And I have just advised everybody, we're having technical difficulties right now, so we are being recorded, but we are not live. Call to the podium, Harriet McKissick. Subject is co-teaching classes. Remind all people that are going to be addressing the board tonight, there is a three-minute time limit.
Good evening, everyone. I'm yielding my time to Lindsay Choros. My three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Call to the podium, Patty Coombe. Co-taught classes.
Good morning, or good afternoon, evening. I would like to do the same.
Thank you. Call to the podium, Erin Levine. Co-taught classes.
I'm also yielding my time to Lindsay.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
And now a call to the podium, Lindsay Choros. Hopefully, you're not yielding your time to somebody else, are you? Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. I am Lindsay Choros. I'm gonna take the time. Hopefully, I won't take the whole time. I'm gonna try and be as concise as I can. I also want to give you guys really quickly some copies that I made, so that way if my time does run out, you have some stuff.
Can you bring them forward?
Yeah.
I'm sure you can just pass them out, hand them out if you like.
There's three different copies.
There you go.
Thank you.
I got two. Do you have three?
I have three, one.
Where's the third one, I think?
Okay, so I guess I'll begin. I had two main objectives for tonight coming in front of the board. My first one is a question. Oh, yes, I am Lindsay Choros. I am a teacher in the elementary school. I am currently teaching fourth grade, but I have taught in numerous grades in the elementary school, kind of bounced around. I've been with the district for five years, technically six. COVID year, I was let go and then came back. So I've been here for a while. I was a student here at Ellenville and moved away, came back to work. Okay. So, see many familiar faces. The question that I have is why the elementary school does not offer integrated co-teaching classes to our students? It's something that I've asked at building-level meetings, committees, district committees, and I have never really found a answer. So I provided with you guys a continuum that is state-mandated, also nationwide-mandated. If you are familiar with the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, districts are legally responsible for having environments for special education students. And the goal of those environments is always to provide least restrictive. And when you look at our pyramid, one of the ones that are least restrictive is the integrated co-teaching classrooms. I understand, we offered it as a district. We offered it to the middle school when there was a middle school. Now we have the junior, senior high school. It is offered there. I don't know how the model is working in the high school. I'm obviously not there. I don't know how successful it is. But personally, teaching 14 years, I've seen it in five different districts being played out in the elementary school. It is highly beneficial. It's very effective. I think our students need it. And that goes to the second paper that I gave you guys. If you look at our data, we recently had a faculty meeting, and you can see that our students are severely behind. We have about three-quarters of our students that are not proficient in math. We have about two-thirds of our students who are not proficient in ELA. We have a large amount of students who are in more restrictive environments. If you go onto the New York State Ed Department website, you could see our Ellenville School District data. I was able to see up to 2022, 2023. I was not able to see last year's, maybe as the board, you're privy to that information. But the state has, you know, percentages that they target. Like, they want districts to meet. And parents and teachers should know that the state wants children to be 80% or more of their time in a gen ed classroom. So ICT qualifies as that, too. Because it's a general education classroom that has a special educator in there with the general education teacher. So if you've never heard of ICT, that's the two teachers in one classroom. Ellenville, right now, we're not meeting that target. We have about 45%. The state wants more than 58%. And that was at that year. I'm not sure the percentage last year or this year. So we're not meeting that. And I think making ICT classrooms, the integrated co-teaching classrooms, is an easy way to kind of fix that. I think staff and students really need it. I think my colleagues and myself are working overtime. We're struggling. But when you come into our classrooms, you're not going to see that struggle. We put on our game face every day. These kids do not know how much of a struggle it is to meet their needs. And we try and hide that on purpose, right? We don't want the kids to know. I have personally in my class eight different reading levels. There's only five school days. Our ELA blocks are about 40 minutes. It's impossible for me to meet all my children in one week, unless I double up in a different period. So I'm doubling up in my intervention period. If there was two adults in that classroom, I would be able to meet with them in four days. Or faster if we doubled up in other periods, too. It just alleviates a lot of stress and the pressure, and the kids get more face time. I think the important thing I am really begging for is for the kids to get help because they really need it. And we go home every day and we're like, we go home sometimes in tears because I'm not meeting some kids. They are saying, "I need help," and I can't help them because I can't split myself. Another benefit, if you look on, I provided you guys a list that is from a government site that is state resource centers. You can see the insurmountable amount of benefits that ICT classes have for children. I think it would help with scheduling. Right now, we have the resource program, which we have students being pulled out, which I think my colleagues, again, are doing a phenomenal job with that. I think admins are doing the best they can with scheduling and rostering our classrooms. But as the data shows, we have too many kids that are struggling. That resource room model is not working. Our kids are leaving the classroom. Anyone who's ever had children know that to take a kid out of anywhere takes time. And when you have a 40-minute block, you're really down to maybe 25, 30 minutes with that kid. And walking with tiny legs across a huge building to a different room is more disruptive than it is helpful to our elementary classes. High schoolers, they can walk on their own. Elementary, we need escorts. We have the teachers walking across the building back and forth, back and forth, bringing these kids places, losing time with them. Many of those children who are now being pulled out and removed from the classroom, who are now missing critical instruction, right? Most of their accommodations could be met in the classroom if there was an integrated co-teaching classroom. Many of them could just be there. We also have situations in our special ed classrooms. They're being capped. We have a lot of kids in self-contained. And there are children who could possibly come out of self-contained, but we don't offer an environment for them. We have done things to accommodate for that. We've tried having kids come out of special ed for reading. If they're, you know, doing really well in reading, they can try going into a gen ed classroom for that reading block of time. However, that's a very extreme difference. Going from self-contained to a gen ed classroom with 20-something kids and one general ed teacher. If we had an ICT classroom for that child to come out of self-contained, too, they have a special ed teacher and a gen ed teacher together in that classroom that would be able to meet their needs. So now we open up some spots in our self-contained classrooms. I think just the placement overall, it would be easier for scheduling, it would be easier for rostering. It would be easier for teachers to meet their kids face-to-face if there was a classroom that had that integrated co-teaching. I think as the years have progressed, our children are getting further and further behind, and we're just constantly playing catch-up. And I think the district has done amazing in making some changes. We've seen growth this past year. I think we did phenomenal in growing. But growing is still a very relative word, right? Our kids did better, but they're still behind. They're still severely behind, not just a little, severely behind. So I just hope that the board understands that there are a lot of benefits to ICT classrooms. I understand that we can't make changes very quickly, that there's a lot that goes into it. But I think integrated co-teaching classes is a no-brainer. It's something that we can do for our kids. It doesn't have to be rolled out in every single grade of the elementary school. We could try it with maybe just the two resource teachers that we have, changing them one year to being into the classroom. Try it with, you know, second and third grade, see how that goes. I've seen ICT work in, all the way in kindergarten. I was in New York City schools. We had ICT very young. I think we don't need it. I think it's definitely a want. I would love ICT on every grade level. I think we could get away with AIDS. I think just having another body in the classroom for K and even first grade would be helpful. But I definitely think in those testing grades, second grade, you'll see that gap very, very drastic. They need, they need that special educator. We need a professional. We need help. The kids need help. And it's really important that the board understands that, that we need that help. I don't know if you guys have questions. I don't know the format for getting answers, but I really would like to know why. I think parents should know why. It's not offered. It's offered when the kids are older. But like any special education intervention, earlier is better. Anything that started once a kid's 15 is not as effective as when it started when they're six. These things could help. I mean, you can go online and find millions of articles, scholarly and not scholarly, personal research. Things like attendance. Attendance is better. We have attendance issues in our district. Kids feel better coming to school when they have two teachers paying attention to them. It's really tough for a child to be in a classroom where a teacher can't see them because they're with another group. And focusing on kids who legally, and they do need help. You know, I don't want to ignore any of my students, but it's getting harder to meet them all.
So Lindsay, you mentioned a term like least restrictive environment. There are some laypeople here. Would you care to explain what the definition of least restrictive environment and how it applies to classrooms?
Yeah, absolutely. So in special education, we have different environments. And least restrictive means the amount of time that a student is with general ed students. So we want general education students who are doing regular grade-level curriculum. We want special education students as much of their time with those children in an environment that has them with their peers that do not have IAPs or 504s or special education accommodations. So you want to have the most time that's separated. And as we move up that continuum of more restrictive, they're having less time with their peers that do not have accommodations. So right now, like the resource, they're removed out. They're leaving their peers to go sit somewhere else.
So I know you want some answers to your questions and what you're posing to the board. So I'm going to defer to the superintendent to have her address this issue right now and hopefully to give you some insight.
So I appreciate you coming and thank you for the information. And we have been talking for many years about co-teaching models. And you're 100% correct. We do have a 712 co-teaching or co-teaching classes that we have for ELA and for math. Any region's level classes, actually. And I don't know if you know this, but our 712 program right now is under review by the State Education Department. They've been coming in and doing walkthroughs, really giving us great insight about the special ed programs that we have and some improvements that we need to make. And one of the concerns that, and I want to be very clear, and I know the way, you know, the communication goes in this district. I'm not opposed to co-teaching classes, but if we're going to do them, we have to do them right. And the feedback that we've gotten on our 712 co-teaching classes is that they need to be revamped. So before we add more co-teaching classes, we have to make sure that we have a model that's going to work. So that's one of the conversations that has come up during our review meetings with Dr. Steinfeld and other members of the team there about co-taught models. One of the things that, I just want to go back to what you said with regard to resource room, why don't we just take the resource room teachers and make them ICT teachers in the elementary school? It'd be difficult to do because a resource room and that service is on the continuum. It has to be offered. So there are some students that are benefiting from resource, from what I understand. We can't just say, "No, we're not going to offer a resource room anymore. We're going to have to, we're moving, shifting those resources over to ICT." So we can't just do that.
I, I, 100% agree.
We looked. We've been looking and talking about that.
I would have it all if it was up to me.
Me, too? I would have it all, also. Unfortunately, we've been adding a lot. We've been doing different things. We all want more. And I'm not saying we can't have more, but before we commit, you know, one of the things that we've done in the past is we'll add a resource and we'll just throw the resource in and then hope it works well, right? So in order to justify those resources and to see where we are, we have to carefully think out where we're going. And we've added an awful lot of money to the special education. But, and I don't, it's not about the money. So I know, no matter what I say here tonight, everybody's going to disagree with something that I have to say and pick it apart. And I'm okay with that, right? Because in the bottom line here for this board and myself and the administrator team and especially the teachers, and I do want to say to the teachers, I say it the first day of school, there's no doubt in my mind or anybody else's mind how hard everyone's working here and how challenging it's been over the last few years with the shift coming out of COVID and really what the struggles of our kids are. And we do need more, there's no question. You know, we have limited resources. We have a lot in need. Very often, when I go to the state and I advocate for more, which I do often, it's like sometimes you have to do more with less. That's what they're telling all of us. I will say that I'm also a little concerned, and we'll have more information as we roll into November and December. And this is related, right? So the state is looking at state aid and allowing us to predict and to utilize our resources in a better way. One of the things they're talking about is revamping all of the state aid proposals. So we're a state aid-reliant district with a community that really struggles, right? So it's the balance of everything. So they're talking about some really significant changes in the formula. We don't know what that means. I say, fund special ed the way you're supposed to fund it. Give us more resources for the kids that need more because that will help us, enable us to look at other programs. I do know that in the absence of ICT classes, and you mentioned this, Lindsay, that we do try to pull our students out of those self-contained classes and do push-in models, right, to a regular ed class. And if, maybe if you're saying if the regular ed class had a TA or more support, it would, it would go a long way. I do want to point out that this board, and we have been very committed to keeping class sizes at a relatively low rate. We're very lucky for that because I know some of my colleagues have classes in the same types of districts like ours that have 25 or 30 kids in them. So we're looking at everything. We're not opposed. I know the rumor is the superintendent is vehemently opposed to ICT. I am not vehemently opposed, but I really don't want to keep adding programs if we haven't mastered how to do it. And I understand the model is completely different for elementary school, that it is for 712. But when I come before this board and I ask for resources, and they will tell you, they, I ask a lot, and they hold us very accountable. I need to be able to have the confidence here to make sure that what I'm going to recommend, we're going to see those differences. I know sometimes we add resources to things. We don't always see the movement. But it's not something that, it's a no for me right now because we don't have the resources and we don't have a modeled program to look at. And I know my colleagues in districts like ours have ICT classes. And if you look at their data, it's very similar to ours. So I'm not saying that we can't do more and we shouldn't look. We will, for sure. And we're having these discussions. And I'm leaning into the state because they have the data of all districts that have ICT to see what we need to do. So it's not, I'm never going to say a hard no to anything. It's a hard no right now because I can't come to this board or to our school and say, "We want more co-taught" if I'm being shared and show that we can make some improvements to the co-taught program we have now. I'm not throwing anyone under the bus. We can always get better. But I appreciate this and I want to say again that I, and the public needs to hear this because, you know, I don't think people really understand what goes on in a classroom during the day.
100%.
And I think, and I know that the teachers here work extremely hard. And the growth that we've seen over the year is great. But it took a lot of... They're building behind me. It took, it took a lot of discussion, movement, pain, in some cases, to move things around to get to that improvement. I feel we're on a good track. It's, this is not a hard no. It's never been a hard no for me. It just needs to be done right. Because I can't keep asking for more resources if we're not, and I've asked for a lot. The board knows that I've asked and I will continue to ask. But we really have to fix what we have already and then see how we can, we can move the process and the program along.
Thank you.
And we appreciate, and I appreciate you coming here, 100%. And I'm sure the board does, too. And we will definitely look at it.
Thank you, yeah.
Can we ask questions or no? Can we?
Ask the superintendent, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I could say after if you want to hear personal anecdotes of the class sizes.
Who do you want to ask?
I'd like to ask Lindsay a couple of things.
Go right ahead.
Percentages of special ed.
Lindsay, first off, I want to say congratulations. I always love it when one of our students comes back to teach. So congratulations on that. I want to assure you from my point of view that if looking at these problems and trying to fix them was just a matter of effort, this board would be, we'd have our district at the top of the state academically. We look at everything. I co-taught for five years and I loved it. I think having a second teacher in the classroom is a tremendous addition for all the reasons that you listed here. I will tell you that the state often sets standards that we're currently under. You mentioned percentage-wise. They love to mandate things that cost the district a lot of money, but they don't usually send the money along with that. And I'm sure that that's one of the questions, how much more? I think there's a lot that applies to when you're doing co-teaching. Less restrictive doesn't work across the board because there are kids in our elementary that will always be in a self-contained classroom for whatever reason. To do an ICT, you need two compatible teachers, and they have to get those goals together. And what I'd like to propose, Madam Superintendent, if you're not opposed to this, since we don't have that model, could we set up a committee to look at it? And rather than wait, at least have some of the interested parties be on a committee that could come up with some answers that do this. And as we've often done, perhaps we could start out on a trial basis.
I actually would like to add on to that because I had a coworker also mention. I think, like you mentioned, compatibility is huge for it to work. I think the district should offer like a survey. I think survey the staff, who would like an ICT environment and who would be willing to teach in an ICT environment. And maybe speak with the special education department about that, maybe moving down to one resource teacher if we can't just remove resource. But something so, it's a start, you know, we can try it. I think other districts have it, like Ms. Wiles pointed out. I think we have enough models that we can try and follow one of them.
And you heard, Lindsay, and I want to thank you for coming in and thank all the teachers and everybody that's here this evening, you know, for your interest in this. And certainly, we're not, you know, I don't think the board's opposed to this. We just, as the superintendent says, it's got to be a workable model and it's got to be one that, when we invest in it, that it's going to work. Obviously, we don't want to, you know, go in and have something not work, right? And we want to make sure the program is right and the model's right. So I think it warrants further discussion. I'd like you to get together with the superintendent and Mrs. White and Mr. Prokosh to discuss this further.
Thank you so much.
But thank you very much for coming in. Thank you all. Yes, go ahead.
I was wondering if we could, as a board member, I would like to have more information about what an integrated co-teaching model is about. So I don't know if you have that information available for us? Would you include it in the packet, maybe?
We could, and I'll ask Dr. Steinfeld from the Regional Partnership, who's working with us, because he's one of the people that we've been talking to about it, to provide a lot of research in the, you know, both sides of everything.
Yeah, I'm curious to know just how they suggest setting up such a thing. And one quick question, when you're co-teaching, there are two certified teachers and one is a regular ed and one is a special ed? Is that generally the combination?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to reports of correspondence. There is nothing from ourself, board members. John, how did the Hall of Fame go?
Thanks for asking, Phil. The Hall of Fame was phenomenal. It seems to get better every year. I think people come knowing that it's going to be a good time. We had three individual athletes get inducted in the 1961 baseball team. And as always, an emotional time for them and a fun time. And everything came together amazingly. And I thank all of the people that helped put it together. And each year, we try and make a slight improvement and it was just wonderful. So I really want to thank my colleagues on the board and the administration and especially Lisa for the continued support for this. I think it's one of the, it's not just because I'm the chairman of it. I got a lot of help, believe me, but I think it's one of the finest events during the school year. And so to the public, I'd like to say, please, please nominate somebody that you think is worthy. The bylaws do say there's a time period, but for expediency, we'll take nominations year-round. Just contact the athletic director's office, get the form and do as much research as you can when you nominate someone for the Hall of Fame. And then the committee takes a look at that. But it's just a tremendous event. And thank the board members and administrators that came out. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And thank you for all the work you do on that. It is a wonderful event and it's something Ellenville School can be proud of. So thank you.
I think it was videotaped, too, if I'm not sure. I don't know how to access that, but...
Our student representative is not here this evening. We'll move on to Superintendent Lisa Wiles.
So a few things this evening. So, a few things this evening. I do wanna just double, double on the comments of the Hall of Fame. It was a great day. Um, I was impressed with all the inductees, but to see members of our community from the class of nineteen sixty-one and the baseball team, it was really nice. They loved coming back and seeing the school. We started a little tradition where we do a tour so that they can see what the facility looks like now, and it was, it was a great day. But kudos to all of the inductees and really John for your persistence and making sure that this continue and that, um, we have this event every year. Uh, two other things. I'm gonna start with the conversations and some of the, um, collaboration that we're doing with the Town of Worthing. You might know that they received a grant for the pool. Um, and we've been working closely with Mr. Hauck and Mr. Brown, um, on dovetailing two things. There, the grant they received with the, um, proposition that we're gonna be putting up to the public on December third, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about that. So, um, we're, the board will be, uh, voting on whether or not to move forward with a capital referendum um, on December third, later on in this meeting. Um, the work in the referendum will just continue on the improvements that we've had in the districts over a period of time. Um, and then also work on the athletic fields that, um, and the athletic facility that has not seen a lot of improvement. So, we're going to be rolling out information. Um, we have some flyers that are out. We have some boards that are out. We're going to the PTO meetings and other meetings that, um, that I can get to, like the town and the village. Um, and, and other meetings, I'm going to be doing, we are gonna be doing tours of the facility on election night during the spaghetti dinner at five, six, and seven o'clock. Then we're gonna have a community forum to discuss the project at length for anybody in the community on Thursday, November seventh. Prior to that, at the next board meeting on, at October, at the October twenty-second board meeting, we'll be doing a full presentation on what this capital, um, program will include. But basically, in a nutshell, it's going to, and Nifiza, if you can put these out so that the people here can see them, it would be greatly appreciated. So, the items that are included on what's being voted on tonight are a public announcement system and phone system, K, pre-K through twelve in the district, continue to replace aged doors, uh, seven-twelve. Uh, most of the doors in the elementary school have been replaced. Um, we'll continue on with the window replacement program. Um, continue on with the missing or deteriorated bricks and masonry, end-to-life electric panels. Uh, we plan to introduce an outdoor education space right outside the elementary library there in that little area. Um, working on old folding partitions and aged water service, more work on ventilation and air systems, and physical education upgrades on the handouts that I gave you. Um, and if anyone's interested after the meeting at, looking at these boards, we're talking about reconstructing the track and the football field, putting in a new concession stand or bath house that will, that's one of the things we're collaborating with the town on. Moving the existing pool house to the other side of the pool, making that a multipurpose room, that's what we're calling it. Um, that can double for the school and the, and the town for the pool. Um, really doing a synthetic football field, rehabilitating the soccer and field hockey fields, the grandstands. I'm gonna stop talking now. You're all reading. But we'll have more discussion about this. There'll be a, a presentation on the twenty-second. Uh, there's some local costs. The proposal that's gonna go up is for twenty-two point three million. We have a capital reserve of two point five million. That'll leave a local share of nineteen point eight million, of which we should receive about sixty percent of that in state aid. Um, that'll leave us to a, a tax levy increase over the period of time we build out. Should cost Town of Worthing residents for the year an additional eight or nine dollars a year in taxes. Um, ten dollars, ten, eleven dollars in Rochester, um, and mamacating a little bit more than that, maybe fifteen dollars a month. Um, but we're gonna break all of that down. So, this is coming up on December third. Um, we're gonna be out in the community, talking to people, giving you the facts about what this is. And I just wanna say this. When our kids travel and go to other school districts and they go into other facilities, right? Whether it be an auditorium, whether it be a field, whether it be a football field, and they go and see other places and other schools that have facilities that are much more modern than ours, that's an equity issue for me, always has been here. You know, our students should have the same type of facilities, even though our community, you know, has to stretch to afford things sometimes. Um, it's important that we look at it, and that, that's what I'm saying about all of the capital. And I will thank the community because over the last ten to fifteen years, there has been great support to keep this building up and going. We've been able to keep it open and have good facility use in the building, which we plan on continuing. Um, but our students should have the same access to modernized facilities. And this project and the ones we've done in the past have allowed that to continue. So, more information to come. I just wanted to introduce it here. And I also, you know, wanna say again that we're collaborating with the town, with that pool grant, to see how we can leverage all the funds that are in the pool to see, literally, not really in the pool, in the funding, to see how we can leverage the funding to minimize the impact to the taxpayers. That's all I have tonight.
So, just to piggyback on the comments the superintendent made about the, the project. You know, for years, um, and I can go back to when my daughters were playing sports and you go to these other facilities and you see, um, how the, the children of those, um, school districts and the things that they have. And then you talk about pride in your, your athletic programs. Well, we have, it's no secret, our athletic programs have been hurting over the years. And what can we do to make our athletic programs more appealing, get more student involvement, get more parental, uh, support at these, uh, games? One of the things you could take a look at is, uh, the improvement of our fields. When, when, and, and this holds true because I've had people say, you know, well, I'm gonna move to, I, well, I moved, I'm, I'm choosing to go to Roundout because they have this beautiful athletic, you know, these beautiful facilities, um, when it comes down to choosing to go to a district. That should not be. It should be that I wanna come to Allenville because Allenville has the same, if not better, um, facilities for our kids and not just athletics, but our academic programs. And our children, um, deserve the same shots and the same, uh, equal opportunities that other, uh, districts have given over, uh, have given to their, uh, facilities. So, when you take a look at this, no matter how you vote, just get out there and vote. Uh, we're not gonna tell you how to vote, but we, uh, certainly, um, it's very important that you exercise your right to vote. But take a look at this, really study this because it's something that is gonna be really beneficial to our athletic programs. It's gonna give our children pride, and when the children have pride, the word will spread and we'll have more participation and better athletic programs in the years ahead. And that's, hopefully, um, that's something that we sincerely hope will happen. Thank you. Move on to Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Vince Napoli.
Thank you. There is, uh, a rendering of the Hall of Fame hallway. If you haven't had a chance, please take a look at that. I think we're pretty close to, um, having the architect actually start the design work, so I just need some, some feedback on that. We also hired a, uh, professional photographer, drone operator, to take some videos and some still pictures of our athletic fields and our, and our campus in preparation of the capital project. That drone, um, operator, this, this company is a spouse of a board member. So, that's, that's one of our policies. We need to, we need to disclose that. Um, it's perfectly legal to do that as long as we don't spend over seven hundred and fifty dollars. I think it's policy sixty-two twenty-one if I'm... Fifty, five twenty, right. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Move on to Deputy Superintendent Kelly White.
Good evening. I just wanna let the board and the community know that work is underway on the twenty-four, twenty-five school improvement plans. Um, we hope to bring them to the board at the November twenty-sixth meeting. We are working with a consultant company to make sure all of the initiatives outlined in those plans um, are aligned with multiple initiatives we have going on throughout the district. Um, so the team, um, had a meeting last week and will continue to meet through the month of October and early November. And, um, there also is a resolution for, um, to amend the technology training for the SRP staff to include the buildings and grounds. Um, I, uh, had paused on beginning that work, um, until the board meeting if we could revisit that to include them in that training as well. Um, and hopefully, if that gets approved, I'll be getting information out in the next coming day, uh, coming days to promote that opportunity.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Personnel and Curriculum, Mr. Scott Prokosh.
Thank you. I do not have any items at this time.
You just got here. Thank you. We'll move on to personnel resolutions for this evening. Under five point one, upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools, be it resolved that Susan Burns be appointed as a Deputy Internal Claims Auditor and no additional remuneration for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Five point two, support related personnel substitutes. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools, be it resolved that the following substitute personnel be appointed for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So, the list has been moved. And seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Five point three, co-curricular. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools, be it resolved that the co-curricular personnel is set forth on the attached list be approved. It's been moved. Seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Five point four, intramural sports. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools, be it resolved that the following individuals be approved for intramural sports for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year at a rate of forty-seven dollars per hour work now to exceed twenty-five hours per sport. They are Brian Bonnetts for basketball, Kathleen Burns for basketball, and Brian Bonnetts for basketball. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? You just explain how you can do it.
Yeah, uh, the one basket... The one intramural basketball is four through six, and the girls' basketball and boys' basketball are seven through twelve. So, there's three intramurals that are being approved for this.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? One, Mr. Burns. Five point five, junior high school extended day programs. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools, be it resolved that the junior, senior high school extended day personnel as set forth on the attached list be approved at the contractual rate for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Move the list, present it.
The list has been moved. Seconded, discussion. John?
Can we get an update on what the, uh, ongoings at the extended day consist of? We haven't, I haven't, I don't think we've got an update in the last bit. Could you kinda just explain to me what, what all's going on there? And how that differentiates from some of the high dosage and the extra help we've done in the past?
Kelly?
So, our extended day program, um, the traditional program is designed for students to go in and, you know, receive remediation, um, that is, might not be like directed towards a specific need, but I'm just coming in for a general extra help. I might have a test I'm preparing for. I might need to do lab corrections. Um, the teachers don't really need, um, and in some cases, especially in the junior, senior high, the teachers don't even know who's showing up. It's a more of a walk-in model, whereas opposed to the high dosage model, the students attending that program require the, the, the teachers that teach in that program. It's not tutoring, it's reteaching. Um, and it's reteaching based on very specific skills, so they need time to, um, take a look at where the students are and plan instruction tailored to those students that are pre-registered to attend since it's not a walk-in.
Is it, is it feasible to ask that the, um, contractual rate and the, uh, frequency of meetings is put into the resolutions? I always ask, like, when we appoint people to stuff, uh, what's the, the end? Like, sometimes there's a, a cap or an end date on something. Is it reasonable to ask that we put that in there for future information?
You can amend the motion. You can make a motion to amend it.
Well, I don't, I don't know what it is that I'd be amending it to because I don't know what those rates are or what the distance, what the amount is.
I'm not sure I'm understanding what you're asking.
So, we're, we're putting them in for a high, they meet every day for three hours? Do they meet once a week for one hour? How, how often?
How many hours?
This resolution is for the junior, senior high extended day. It's not for high dosage tutoring. Those are two.
What is the contractual rate and how, what is the frequency and how many maximum hours can they meet? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that, that, that information is on the job posting that goes out. We can have that added in here.
Yeah, it's, it's two days a week, the one hour after school. And we, we'll get the information for you and we'll add it into this. There's a contractual rate. I don't wanna say what it is because I'm not positive what it is. It's in the forties somewhere.
Then, then we'll have to table the motion.
Then we're gonna delay the services start.
I withdraw my question.
You withdraw?
Yep.
We will definitely include it in the packet and include it in further resolution.
Well, I don't wanna hold up the program. I just think for transparency, it would be good to have these informational items on it.
Agreed. We'll make sure that it goes on.
Iris?
So, um, it is, we're in contractual mode, so why is this just getting replaced now?
Typically, we, this is a, typically, we post for it as soon as the teachers get back. We have a two-week posting and we move forward at the first meeting in October.
Is that just basically to get everyone acclimated to the regular schedule and then start this?
Yes, and, and making sure that all the teachers have the ability. Like, if we post over the summer, not everybody sees the posting over the summer, so we do it as soon as we get back to school.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Five point six, professional development. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the resolution dated September seventeen, twenty-four, under Personnel six point two oh, be amended to include the buildings and ground staff as follows. Resolve that Superintendent Schools authorized to approve up to twenty hours of basic computer skills and district-based technology programs training to security attendants, cafeteria monitors, teacher aides, and buildings and ground staff at the hourly, at their hourly rate. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Lisa Ramirez? No, no discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Registered nurse, five point seven, be it resolved that the resolution dated July second, twenty twenty-four, under Personnel six point one oh, be amended to reflect authorization of fourteen hours per, per week for Jessica Graham to attend before-school activities with student number two. It's been moved. And seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Policy resolutions for this evening?
Motion move six one and six two.
Been moved. Seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Budget resolutions for this evening?
Motion move seven one and seven two.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Legal resolutions for this evening under eight one. Resolve that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the settlement of an action against the Allenville Central School District and the Board of Education of the Allenville Central School District pending in Supreme Court, Olster County, bearing index number EF two zero two zero dash seventeen twenty-four. In accord, in accordance with the terms and conditions of the settlement agreement and release, unfilled with the district clerk and be further, be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent, the board president, and the board's attorney to execute and file such papers as may be necessary to effectuate the foregoing settlement and be further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the district to make such budget transfers as may be necessary to effectuate the settlement.
So moved.
Been moved. Seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Student IEPs? Oh, timeout. You're opposed. No, Mr. Burns opposed. Nine point one, student IEPs. Be it resolved, the attached list of student IEPs be acknowledged as appropriate. There are forty-six. Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Construction, construction resolutions. Somebody wanna move ten one to ten seven? Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Under other, eleven point one, donation. Resolve that it... Excuse me? Oh, sorry, ten eight. Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Under other, eleven point one, resolve that the donation from Skyway Seasonals in the amount of five hundred and seventy dollars to be used for homeless students in the district. Been moved? Do I have a second? Second, discussion. John?
Lisa, what does the state give us for our homeless students?
You know what the allocation is, Ben?
Well, they don't give us any money. We do allocate some money in Title One. We, we do a set aside, seven thousand dollars a year, maybe.
Yeah, we're required in our Title One grant to have a homeless reserve, which has to be a minimum of one percent of the amount of the grant, which this year, that one percent, um, is around seven thousand dollars. And that's used, um, this year, we're allocating that for before and after-care services. There's been a need for, um, children who are homeless for their parents to have access to before and after-care so that they can, um, seek employment, work out any issues related to, you know, their, their homelessness and just know that their children are in a safe place.
Thank you.
I do also wanna add that it's important... I do also want to add that it's important to note that there are some mandated services that we have to provide. So if a student, for example, if a student is homeless and they're a student here and they end up living in another community, school district is responsible for providing the transportation for that student back and forth. So while we do have some additional funding that we use out of the grant funds, there are mandated services, transportation being one of them, that we, we have to.
And I certainly wouldn't want to deny anybody's services, but I'll ask, the state doesn't provide money for those.
Unfunded mandate.
Shocked.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 11-2, college/university affiliation agreement. Resolved the Board of Education, Allenville Central School District, approve the agreement with Western Governors University, see attached. Been moved. Seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Field trip approval, 11.3. Resolved that students in grades eight through 12 be approved to travel out of state to Howard University in Washington DC on November 2, 2024. Moved? Do I have a second? Seconded, discussion. All those in favor?